Okay, you guys ready? Good evening. Today is Tuesday, July 2nd. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on my nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Bachman.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Here.
Mayor Sullivan.
Here.
Councilmember Pratt.
Here.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Here.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Here.
City manager.
Here.
City attorney. Finance director.
Here.
Community development director.
Here.
Police chief.
Here.
Fire chief.
Here.
City engineer.
Here.
Role call complete.
Thank you. Public hearings, we have none. Citizens comments under related items.
Andrew Stafford, 275 First Street. On the behalf of the DDA and also as the Director of Economic Development with the Chamber of Commerce, who oversees the county's economic development efforts, I would just like to express my support for the consideration of submission of MDOT's Shared Streets and Spaces grant, as well as the repeal of Chapter 1028. We really see this as an effort to prioritize pedestrians in our downtown, create a space that makes Manistee feel more community oriented, and through those efforts, we will be directly impacting our businesses by promoting pedestrians downtown and increasing patronage in our downtown spaces. So I would just really like for council to take that into consideration as they are weighing these repeals and also the consideration for submission of the MDOT grant. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Consent agenda. Sorry, go ahead. It happens to me all the time.
I'm Kyle Mosher, 50 Green Bush Street. I also serve as the DDA Chair, and I kind of mimic what Andrew had to say as well. There's three items on the agenda: City Services Agreement, the Shared Streets and Spaces Grant, as well as the repeal of the ordinance, and I support all of those. City of Manistee and the downtown, downtown Manistee is a central business district and is clearly the face of Manistee. It's often the attraction, the first attraction locals, visitors, and second homeowners come to experience dine and enjoy Riverwalk and congregate when in Manistee. All my efforts as a volunteer in this position, and the efforts of the DDA Board and staffer to recognize these assets, improve upon them, and be caretakers of them, I'm asking for your support on these agenda items. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Consent agenda. All items marked with an asterisk are considered by the city manager to be routine matters. Prior to approval, any member of council may have an item removed and taken up during a regular portion of the meeting. Items include approval minutes, cash balances, revenue expenses, consideration of Cadmore and Racing Association of Michigan holding a Manistee Regatta July 13th, 14th, 2024. At this time, council could take action to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I will second that.
Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of authorizing the City Services Agreement with the Downtown Development Authority, DDA. The DDA voted to renegotiate the City Services Agreement at their November 8th, 2023 meeting. City staff and DDA representatives renegotiated the terms at the 19th, 2024 DDA meeting. They voted to authorize the agreement and recommend city council approve the agreement as well. At this time, council will take action to approve the City Services Agreement and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute this agreement. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I don't have a question, but could we get like a quick overview for people that weren't at the DDA meeting?
Sure. Thank you. So, the DDA voted to renegotiate the contract. Looking at the costs that were paid, us in the chamber, it does kind of handicap the DDA with what they can pay for bonds or the service, debt service for a future bond for the streetscape. So we wanted to work with them to put this more in line and free them up a little bit with that as well. Some of the questions that led to this were kind of what specific services does the city provide the downtown? We ended up itemizing, kind of looking at the different things we do downtown that we don't do other places, but I kind of took the parks as kind of a baseline for that. So what we looked at is we do enhanced, you know, we put out the flower boxes every year, the hanging baskets, we do the watering, winter maintenance, we actually remove all of the snow downtown, not just regular plowing, we actually get it off the sidewalks, we put it in the middle and actually carry it out of the downtown, which is an enhanced service. The banners, we kind of at the request of the DDA Executive Director, we move the banners, put them up, social district signs, pedestrian yield signs, the holiday decorations are put out and removed. A lot of these services. Also, the bathrooms in the parks, they're open just till obviously the spring, summer, part of the fall, those are open all year round, so kind of took that as into consideration as well. So, long story short, we used the itemize, just the labor time, and we kind of decided we're going to cut the amount in half. It was originally 65,000, the last contract agreement, we brought it to 32,500. We took the audited, so we have an MDOT audited wage rate that we use for when we do 31 maintenance, and you know, this is basically the labor rate for each season. I took that percentage of the total and then put that as a percentage of 32,500 to get kind of, when the question comes up about what's being performed and what season, that question's answered. So there, I think we just are looking for some acknowledgement about the services that are required or provided downtown, and we found a mutual ground and just looking for council support to pass this and move forward.
So, did you take out any like major service, like when it pops up, you'll be like, oh, there are pretty names?
No, we're gonna, we're committed to doing what's needed downtown.
Okay. Anybody else?
I have one more question. This talks about flower baskets being hung and watered and cared for, doesn't talk about the boxes around the sidewalk by the businesses. Are we not in that business anymore with the flower boxes?
And that's, I think that's down here under, so flower boxes, I don't know if you can see that. So that was kind of the watering, the placing boxes, and then over here you have kind of like two employees, six hours, one week. So that's kind of, it's a fun spreadsheet that Ed looked at and Jeff, and, but we did try to take all that into account, so.
I'm not sure I understand the answer. Are we watering those boxes still?
We are, yes.
But it doesn't say that here.
It does.
I thought it was pretty inefficient having an employee, I've seen the details, yeah. I thought it was pretty inefficient having an employee of DPW watering those boxes outside the door of a business. I didn't understand why a business couldn't walk outside watering themselves. Just seemed to me to be an awful lot of time. The baskets were reasonable, but I thought the, anyway, that's just my personal opinion, it just seems kind of silly.
And I think one of the streetscape elements we're talking about is potential irrigation at those again, so maybe, but point taken, I mean, maybe the businesses could order them too.
Thank you.
Well, I think years ago, if you asked for a box, you took on the responsibility of maintaining it, which included the watering.
You're kind of a volunteer doing on Riverwalk. Why can't a business go and do it on River Street?
Yeah, I agree with that. That makes sense in the long run.
Anybody else?
With them flower hanging baskets for them to water, they'd have to get a ladder.
We're not talking about the flower baskets.
I know, I just said.
Yeah, recognize the basket, need a special vehicle.
Yeah.
And they look beautiful.
Anybody else?
I appreciate this comprehensive look at what you do do and, you know, what makes sense to do. It's clear, I think, for everybody, and that always helps. So thanks for your work on it.
Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of authorizing the submission of a Michigan Department of Transportation MDOT Shared Streets and Spaces Grant application. MDOT offered a one-time shared streets and spaces grant. If awarded, the proposed grant application will implement several elements of recommendations from the recent 2024 Manistee River Street Corridor enhancements and future planning document finalized in February. The application is supported by the Downtown Development Authority, a resolution authorizing the submission of the grant application due to prior, due prior to potential grant award in August of 2024. At this time, council could take action to authorize the city's MDOT Shared Street and Spaces Grant application resolution for improvements to River Street and the area of Pine and Spruce Streets. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I will second that.
Any discussion?
I would love to hear a little presentation of exactly what this is all entailed. I see the pictures and whatever, but I love the idea because that's kind of a waste of space to us, so I'd love to hear sort of the narrative for it.
Absolutely. So, we're fortunate, MDOT had a one-time grant for 200,000 to do shared streets and spaces. So it was more about making it flexible space, community space, and I think we've identified that there's kind of an awkward intersection at water and river. There's kind of a lot of wasted space right here where people traveling down Water Street have to really turn their head to yield, they have to check if traffic's coming. So it's just kind of an odd spot, and I think there was a lot of discussion 25 years ago with the, and I think Kyle and some other people with more history on this, but would this be closed down? Could this be a flex space? I know we've had a lot of discussions with the chamber about maybe a food truck court and things, so everyone's been kind of excited about this, and opportunities here. The streetscape study on River Street identified this area as a place that could be more of a pedestrian entrance to the downtown as opposed to the vehicular entrance off of 31. So with that, we started working with Lucas and Spicer, and we came up with a plan that kind of checked a lot of boxes in the grant application. So we feel this is a very strong submission, but we wanted to make it so that, you know, we did put angled parking so that we wouldn't lose some of the parking space. I think we end up having 20 here. We had 29 before, but we still have that parking option. This could be a thorough, a throughfare. There can be a bollard put up to have this be more event space, but typically someone could come in here and then make a left or a right onto Water Street. I think we hear a lot about how people get to Spruce, they miss downtown, they have to go around a block, and this could let them go right back to the downtown area. This implements some of the curbless as well so that there's kind of, it's pedestrian friendly, there's a bike shelter, so to encourage people to bike, put their bike there, check out the marina, go down to the Riverwalk. We've added some handicap spaces. I thought, the other interesting thing is the trolley stop, and I think with the outsider being there, we were really hoping to work with the county, have a, utilize the trolley to do the tours of Manistee, and I think that would be kind of a neat place to have that gathering spot. I don't know, Lucas, am I missing anything? But it's, so we've put 400,000 in the tip for the city's contribution thus far, but we're really trying to utilize that to get more money for this project. So this is just a good way to do it, is to apply for these types of grants and start implementing some of the recommendations from the study.
So it would be a one, it would be a one lane through there?
One lane.
Just a off for an event?
Right, and we could have a bollard here, and we could, exactly.
Okay.
I would advance, most of the time it'd be open.
Okay. Anybody else?
I just want to say to the DDA and Lucas and the city, I love this. This excites me as much as the Riverwalk does and the improvements on the, you know, the city marina as well as the beaches. This is legacy worthy right here, so fantastic work, very good work, everybody. I have to give a lot of credit to Lucas, who was staying late right before his honeymoon working on this, and Kelly did a lot of work on researching some of the aspects of the grant as well, so it was a good team effort.
Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of ordinance 24-8, repeal of Chapter 1028, River Street traffic flow, parking, and amenities on the City of Manistee codified ordinances. Many of the recommendations from the Manistee River Street Corridor enhancements and future planning document, the city's MDOT Shared Streets and Spaces Grant application, and the existing parklets are inconsistent with Chapter 1028 of the City of Manistee codified ordinances. Attitudes have changed with the time from emphasizing vehicular traffic to the current more pedestrian-friendly downtown. As a result, the Downtown Development Authority is recommending the repeal of Chapter 1028 as an ordinance. Two separate readings are required. If this ordinance is introduced at this time, it could be adopted at the next regular meeting. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I just have a question. So right now, it seems like in that section, there's a lot of times we get people that park there with trailers attached to vehicles. So are we going to advertise, like will there be a designated area for people that have boat trailers to park those in the city?
Yeah, I don't see how they could park it there with the new design that we're talking about, and even the current one, I'm not sure if that's compliant. I'd have to talk to the chief about that, but yeah, I definitely think the, if we're awarded the grant, we implement that angled parking, I wouldn't think that they could have the RVs and trains.
Right, I'm just wondering, are we going to advertise, like are we going to take a current city parking lot and designate that like as an appropriate place for people to park? Like somehow we're going to have to advertise.
Okay.
Do you know what I'm saying? Like?
That's something, yeah, we'd have to figure that out, I think that's.
Just saying, like in the grand scheme, because it sounds like by attending the DDA meetings, we're trying to put an emphasis on pedestrians, which makes total sense in the downtown area. So it just seems like we might have to find a place. I personally wouldn't park a boat trailer down there, but I have seen it done.
You're talking about trailers for the marina? You're talking boat trailers for the marina?
Well, like people who are using the marina, or they're just in town and they've got a boat in the water. If they go downtown, sometimes they're eating or they're doing whatever, they'll leave their trailer attached to their vehicle, and they take up several
We have in the past let them park down, they park at where the boat launch is, and if they're staying at the marina, we issue them like a pass that's for while they're staying at the marina, so they don't have to, you know,
Yep.
have a parking pa, it's like a pass that we have written out for them just during their stay at the marina, so they can park at that down at First Street.
Right.
Because they're going to launch their boat and take it down to the marina. If they do that, they can get a parking pass.
And I think probably, we are talking about wayfinding too, so just people who were probably used to parking there, and even though they shouldn't be, but letting them know where they should go.
Just advertising.
Other options, yep, that's a good, good idea.
Yes. Do I need to read the second paragraph first before I do that? How do you want me to do them? It says at this time, council will take action, like it's.
No, I think we're, you're already good on that one. We're on the ordinance.
Right, that's what I thought, that's what I'm reading here. Mine is different, so.
So I think it's an ordinance to repeal this ordinance.
So we're good?
Okay.
I can just do role call?
Okay, please, thank you.
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of approving a professional services agreement for the master plan update. The City of Manistee will be updating its master plan as well as updating zoning to meet the new RRC criteria for housing. The city received a Michigan State Housing Development Authority Housing Readiness Incentive Grant to complete the updates to the master plan, which will include adding language to support zoning regulation changes, to remove obstacles for housing. A request for proposals was advertised for the master plan update. The Planning Commission reviewed the proposal, proposals received as recommending William &amp; Works to complete the master plan update. At this time, council could take action to approve the professional services agreement with Williams &amp; Works and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the agreement. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of ad hoc legal services request for proposal, RFP Committee, the current Micah Myers PLC agreement for general legal services was fully executed in August of 2015, and the separate prosecution agreement with Micah Myers PLC expired in 2021. The city would like to explore options and solicit proposals for legal service. The creation of a selection committee would be beneficial for this process. At this time, council will take action to establish an ad hoc legal services RFP committee. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I will second that.
Any discussion?
What kind of, you say solicit proposals, what proposals are we looking for, Phil?
So for legal services, talking with council members, they wanted to look at different options. So I think part of that committee is going to be defining the scope and the, you know, I think it would be probably a firm and a contract, and so it's, I guess, what else are you looking for?
Well, how many, how many of council people are going to be on this committee?
We're asking for one council representative.
And how many members are going to be on, I mean?
So I had, I have the clerk, who deals quite a bit with the attorney, Ed Bradford, with the Brownfield Authority, Chief Glass with Blight, myself, and then a council member.
Okay.
I have a question. Is there any leeway to have more than one council member? Because I know in the past, when that legal has come up, the attorney really works and represents the council. So is there, if we're only going to have one person on that committee, is there going to be an opportunity for each council member to share input on what they'd like to see somehow, whether that's through a survey, or how would that work?
So looking back, I did find that in 1994, 93, when Micah Myers was selected, it looked like there was group interviews. It was almost like a top three, top four, and then it was kind of an interview process for the, so I think that's kind of the types of recommendations that would come from the committee. As far as the number of council members, ultimately, it is up to council, how many they'd like to appoint. This is just a recommendation.
Anybody else? Heather, would you please take a role?
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. At this time, council could designate a member of council to serve on the committee. Is there a motion?
I make a motion for Councilmember Lundberg.
Anybody second?
Second.
Heather, would you please take role? I'm sorry, any discussion?
Well, can we increase that number to two?
Is there, are you making a motion?
Well, if we can increase it to two, I'd like to, I'll make the motion that we increase it to two, because I'd like to nominate Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Will the meeting be open to the public and other council members to sit in on if they chose to?
I don't think it would be, I don't think having quorum there would be appropriate. I think we could discuss that. I think probably having a committee, whether it be of one or two council members, to bring some other, to make it more of a formal, maybe a top three, like I said, maybe would be appropriate. That way all council has some input. That'd be probably what I'm thinking right now, but I think if you have some other thoughts. So you're saying we, the committee, the smaller committee, would bring three to entire council, and the council, the rest of us would also have input? We could do that. I think that's it.
Okay. So we need to go with the first motion that Wes made, right, and vote on that first?
So we have, right now, we have a motion on the table to designate Councilmember Lundberg to serve on the committee.
Okay.
So we want to vote on that first.
Would you please take a role on that?
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay, so now we need to take role on adding another.
So do you, we, there could be a motion, if there's a motion and a second, to whatever you want to make, if there's another motion, you could make another motion?
Councilmember Pratt made a motion. I didn't hear a second. I guess that's.
So let me, so we had a motion by Councilmember Pratt, second by, is there a second?
I'll second.
To designate a second member of council to the, do you want to just designate the member? Is that what you're trying, you just want to?
Well, I said if you're supposed to do that, I would nominate.
Do we have to have a separate motion to add a second member? Can they just designate council, or Mayor Protem Grabowski as a second member to the?
Like, if the motion to create the council didn't state how many people would be on the council.
So the first one is just to establish the legal services committee?
Yeah.
And then this one was to designate Councilmember Lundberg to serve on the ad hoc committee? So now they could have on to designate Mayor Protem Grabowski to serve as a second member?
Mm-hmm. I, yeah, I don't see, in creating the committee, I don't see.
So I can just add that? It just has to be one motion then? Okay. So it'll just be to designate Mayor Protem Grabowski to serve?
As a second member.
As a second member.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember, are we ready for role call? Sorry, I was waiting for you to finish. Okay. Councilmember Bachman.
No.
Councilmember Smith.
No.
Councilmember Lundberg.
No.
Mayor Sullivan.
No.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
No.
Motion failed.
Thank you. Now we will have a report from the Manistee Area Chamber of Commerce, Miss Stacey Bytworth, and Carmen Cot.
Good evening, Mayor Protem, council members. Thanks for having both of us. Put you on this side of me. Carmen and I are going to give you kind of the highlights of the Chamber of Commerce in 2023. I do have our team with us, and I'll introduce them in a little bit. So if we want to go ahead, I'll wait for that for me. So I just always want a quick recap of our board of directors. Dennis McCarthy is our board chair, and we're happy to have Bill serve on our board as well as a liaison with the city and the chamber. So thank you, Bill, for being able to serve there. Go ahead. The chamber team in 2023 looks a little bit different than who's here today. So myself, Mark Miller was our Director of Economic Development, Carmen Cot, our Operations Manager and Blade, who is still with us, behind us over there. And then we have added, since Mark's departure, we have added Andrew as our Director of Economic Development, which I believe he has come, obviously, today, but previously, and addressed council and introduced himself. And then we also added our intern, Nicole Kaminsky, as our Program Specialist. So Nicole, so I want to welcome them all tonight to their council meeting, the first kind of recap of the chamber, so they'll be able to see that today. Just to recap, our mission is always to serve the business workforce and economic development needs of all in Manistee County, including obviously the city. You know, I'm not going to read those points, but those are some of the mission that we follow, to really cultivate our community, to grow, and work with all our partners to really advance everything in the city as well as the county. Our four priorities are up there. They, we've tweaked them a little bit, but generally, it's advocacy, workforce and economic development, leadership and professional development, and then downtown revitalization with us having the contract for the Manistee Downtown Development Authority. So here's a couple of highlights from 2023 that I really think kind of solidifies what your Chamber of Commerce is doing in the community, and for not only the chamber as a whole, but to include those other areas as economic development, leadership, and then the Downtown Development Authority. So a lot of, we've seen 29 new investors in the chamber. We've seen 11 new downtown businesses in 2023, 15 ribbon cuttings, and that could be anything from a new business, or a grand opening, or a milestone. Our leadership program, which I want to thank the city for support with the last two programs that we've done, we're really excited for the upcoming ribbon cutting with the dog park this year with our current cohort. But they've donated back, just in one year, almost $8,000 to other nonprofits in community support. We've seen 125 new jobs come into our community. $9,000 was spent in the community locally by the Manistee County Cash Program, and then we've seen 27 of our businesses participate in that program. And then the, the big number that I think we all need to recognize is the $51 million that's been invested in our community is the $51 million that's been invested in our community in 2023. And that's by not just the chamber. And when I say chamber, I mean all our partners with the county, the city, the Tourism Authority, the DDA Foundation, everybody that works together collectively to make sure we can bring developers in here to invest in our community and continue to grow. So want to focus a little bit on our business and legislative advocacy. That's one of our, obviously, our main priorities. So when we are in Lansing or where, you know, I was in Washington DC earlier this year, Manistee County has a face in representing everybody in this room and the community and residents and businesses as a whole. So a couple of things that we do locally here is we've done candidate forums. So last year, we had a 2023 candidate forum for city councils. So Wes, congratulations again. And so a lot of the other things that we do as well is just making sure that we have key relationships with our legislators locally, regionally, statewide, and then in DC and beyond. So those are, go back a little bit. Look happy. But a lot of the other things that we do too is we are asked to do letters of support. So we've listed them. I'm not going to go through all those, but that shows that the Chamber of Commerce is supporting a lot of different grant requests or different things in our community that continue to help us grow and support businesses. So our regional and state advocacy, we listed kind of the top things that we focus on. So every year, and I believe Bill was able to attend this year as well as Mayor Protem with our Northern Michigan Policy Conference, but this was last year's. We do that in January of every year. We bring in key players from the state and actual federal government. So I would welcome anybody that's able to attend this coming January. It's a really good event. We've grown it to over 500 people in attendance and it's a full day. The other thing that we work with our colleague and Cadillac as the governor's breakfast. So we attend that every year. We get to take a beautiful picture with the governor and schmooze a little bit. But those are really key things that were, like I said, were in front of legislators, the governor, her staff, a lot. And then obviously, with the Michigan Chamber, we partner with Chamber Day at the Capitol where it pulls in all the chambers across the state legislators. And we really have kind of all collectively trying to have an impact on our communities. And then, so to touch on economic and workforce development, so a lot of things that we've done, obviously, we all know, we're at the Planning Department, the city, the chamber, our economic development efforts. Everyone was at the table to bring in the Hampton Inn. And we really think that this is a huge opportunity for our community. We've talked about it a lot, but that multimillion dollar project, and I hope everyone's had an opportunity to sit out there and, you know, have dinner or a cocktail and really look at the sunset and just the vibrancy of what that has done. And then all the improvements to First Street Beach, it's been really incredible. So that's kind of the highlight, but that has brought more investment into our downtown, sparking some of those businesses that have, you know, and we have a picture of, you know, a couple of the fun ribbon cuttings up there, the Black Lotus. And Mayor, you were at that one. That was kind of a fun ribbon cutting. And so those are really key things that we're doing to bring investment. And so we've listed a lot of those things of new businesses that have come in that is really starting to impact and grow our community, which ultimately is attracting other investment and then it's attracting talent and retaining our talent for our workforce. So some of the other key things, I did talk about the ribbon cuttings, but you know, some of the other numbers, we wanted to make sure that we put up there because we do quarterly reports. And, you know, with some of these larger projects or these incoming developers or small businesses, we do track a lot of those contacts to make sure that we are following up and doing all that. So we've listed those data points so that you have those to show that we are working on behalf of the city, the county, and our other partners in the economic development realm. A lot of things too with, you can see that list up there of the sites. So really being able to, some of those redevelopment sites that we're working with the land bank and the city and really partnering, it's just like collectively and collaboratively really starting to move the needle forward for the community. And then I'm going to turn it over to Carmen. I've had her take the lead on the leadership program. So she's done that for the last couple of years. So she'll talk about some of those projects and the cohorts that we've had last year.
As part of the four main priorities, we have the Leadership and Professional Development. Last year, we saw two classes. The cohort of 2022, 2023 graduated eight people, even though they were small, but they were a mighty class. And as part of the leadership program, they were tasked with a community service project, which they did, which helped from the United States Coast Guard implement eight waterfront life festival stations at our area beaches, including the First Street Beach and Fifth Avenue. So it was a very successful class and they were able to donate almost $8,000 back into the nonprofits in our community, which is just amazing to see what a class and a leadership program can do. And then we welcomed the 2023, 2024 cohort of 13 individuals that are, came from Manistee County and businesses in our area. They are just now wrapping up the cohort and they will be doing a ribbon cutting celebration on upcoming, on Thursday, July 18th. We hope that everyone can be there in attendance. And I just want to say, all of you council members, the city, Bill Gamble, for the support for the revamp of the dog park. I think it's an amazing project and it's amazing what the leadership can do. We also have a leadership alumni in this room as well, Chris Richardson. And I know he can, he's a testament of what the program is all about. And I think that it's important to continue the program as we are heading into the 10th anniversary, the 10th year. It's going to be an amazing achievement, celebration. And we hope that we'll see someone from the city apply to be a part of the program and be a part of the celebration.
Oh, yeah, I forgot. I was doing this slide too. I just wanted to show, we did this in our impact report, just to show, when I mentioned earlier, all the representation that the chamber gets, the county, the city. Those are the different boards that we're representing the county and city on. So I just wanted to recap that. That's some highlights. I won't go through all those, but if you ever have questions on some of those, just knowing that you, you have someone in those areas that's, you know, advocating for Manistee County, the city, and really promoting everything we have in this community. And then also, last year, Mark served on the Housing North Board, has doing a lot with housing. And now Andrew, I mean, I can't even tell you how many great new contacts we have for housing and working with the housing coordinator on that. Carmen also served on the Program Committee for the Michigan Association of Chamber Professionals. And that group works alongside with the Michigan Chamber of Commerce. And we put on programming and professional development throughout the year for all chambers in the state. So Carmen's been instrumental on that. And then Blade serves on the Arts and Culture Alliance in Manistee County. So we're able to kind of have a good network locally and then statewide, regionally, and now in DC. And I'm turning it back to Carmen. And actually, I'm going to, sorry, I'm going to scoot you over one second. Mark Miller was the point of the Manistee Downtown Development Authority and wearing kind of the economic development hat as well. And then when he left in February, Carmen kind of took the reins on that. So I do want to have her kind of recap the year from last year on a lot of the efforts that were done. And I just also want to quickly say, a lot of times we'll get businesses maybe ask, what is the DDA doing for us? What is? So I think some of these data points really show that. So hopefully that we can get that out to, you know, business owners and community, that the DDA Board works really hard to really start implementation for streetscape and other things like that, facades and everything. So I'll let you take it over before I run too far with it.
Earlier this evening, we heard the mission of the Manistee Area Chamber of Commerce. Now, tonight with the DDA, I think it's important to recognize what the mission of the DDA and, you know, that is to, oops, there we go. That is to foster economic growth and development, promote a identifiable and attractive downtown area as well as strengthening businesses and a sense of community ownership. And with that being said, last year, we spent a good amount of time spent on the streetscape plan, you know, identifying the streetscape, I'm sorry, streetscape study. And that kind of goes back with the mission of promoting an identifiable and attractive downtown area. So we're very much looking forward, and there's a lot of work that needs to be done moving forward, but we're really excited to see what the, what the community is going to look like. And I think it's important that we look at the heartbeat of our community so that way we can continue to expand and promote growth with our downtown area. And then not to mention, we do provide every third, every Tuesday of the month at the West Shore Community College Building at 8:30, a downtown business connection meeting, which again, tied back to the mission of, of strengthening our business and a sense of community ownership and giving a headspace for our businesses to come together, to talk about the things that we need for our community, to talk about maybe some of the challenges and opportunities that our downtown can have, such as the upcoming Fall Festival, the Frost Light Festival, and maybe some of the other community events that we can do and come together for. And then in addition, one program that I'm really excited about is the facade grant program. Last year, we were awarded by the MEDC $150,000 with a $50,000 grant from, or match from the DDA. So think about $200,000 that's going back into the downtown for the facade grant. And there were five businesses that were a recipient of that program and that's the Spicer Group, Blue Fish, the Golden Dag Dwelling, and we have the Elks. So it's just amazing to see. And Snyder's is a testament of, you know, showing what that could actually look like. So it's definitely a program that I, that I think that supports and will want to continue moving forward. And then not to mention, sorry, I just want to mention one more thing with the social district. We have, we implemented the social district in 2021 and it has been a successful thing that we have in our community, allowing our, our guests to be able to indulge in a cocktail while waiting for dinner or be able to take a beverage and dine at some of our downtown restaurants. And we, we have spent a number of dollars invested into the social district so that way we can provide that sense of community in our downtown. It's me again. And then.
We're almost done.
With the, the Manistee Area Chamber of Commerce, we do provide a lot of signature programs and events. And, you know, we do highlight a number of things throughout the year. You know, everything from the award gala in the spring, which helps bring the businesses together, to help recognize all of the achievements that they've done in the past year, to recognize individuals that are outstanding and go out of their way to make our, our community better, as well as kicking off the Manistee National Forest Festival as we are literally speaking right now, trying to kick off the Manistee National Forest Festival. But last year, this is an annual event that we do, that we continue to elevate and bring more people to the community. And then, of course, we do provide other events for businesses to come together and network, such as our golf outing, our Chamber on tap that we hold four times a year. And then last but not least, we have the Manistee County Community Christmas, which provides a sense of kicking off the holidays, you know, kicking off the, the winter season, you know, purchasing Manistee County cash for our, from the downtown businesses for a few friends and friends. So without, without that, there wouldn't be an opportunity for people to come together, to have the discussion, to make those relationships and be able to network with one another.
Let me clarify. That's a lot of great work.
Get it. It's a team effort. So that's why we added one more. So I just, you know, want to thank all of you for letting us present today and most importantly, for all your support in working alongside with us, our Economic Development Council, the DDA, and the Chamber Board of Directors and just everybody. And it's nice to have Bill too, being on the Chamber Board, being on the DDA and our Economic Development Council. So he's at the table for all that. So, you know, he can bring a lot more information back. Otherwise, you're going to get a nice presentation every, every council that we probably won't do. But up there, okay, there is an impact report. So if you haven't seen it yet, highly encourage you to watch it. It's something new we did this year. Did a video of kind of the impact of 2023. So it's up there if you have a QR code. Otherwise, it's on our website. We do really try to communicate the best we can in all different channels. So Blade over there is on every possible social media platform, the radio, you know, websites, LinkedIn, everything. So we really are trying our hardest. But if you haven't seen something or you need to get ahold of us, you have a full team that you can contact. And we welcome that. And again, just want to thank you for your support. And we're looking forward to continuing on a prosperous 2024. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Carmen, if you don't have a city employee on your leadership thing next year, call Bill. Because last year, we talked about every leadership, it needs to be a city employee on that. So if you don't see one applying, call him. If he doesn't get one, call me.
I will. You have my word on that.
I'll call you.
Is it going to be you?
I nominate.
I'll be the geriatric team.
Citizen comment. This is an opportunity for citizens in attendance to comment on municipal services, activities, or area of city involvement. Limited to five minutes. Letters submitted to council will not be publicly read. Anybody?
Hi, I'm John Helge, 450 Cedar Street. I'm here today as Chair of your Tree Commission. I just want to let you know, give you a little advance notice. We're going to be coming to you with a couple of grant requests in the next couple of weeks. We've got some great opportunities to get some money, both from DTE and from the DNR. And I'm especially excited about the DNR grant opportunity because we're, we're collaborating with the Manistee County Conservation District to do this. And this could give us the opportunity to get at least $50,000 towards planting new trees in this city. We have, we have sadly had to cut down more trees than we've planted in the last 10 years, but we're making progress. Last year, we planted 44 and we only cut down 40. Okay? But we're, we've got a ways to go. The other thing I'd like to say is I'd really like to express my personal appreciation to our folks from the, your organization, Stacy, because you guys, you guys do such great work. And what's coming up right now, I can't believe you just put this together and then you've got the Forest Festival starting tomorrow. The Forest Festival Parade is, is huge. There'll be 5,000 people lining the streets of Manistee. And I want to just invite all of you after the parade at 11:30 to join Michigan Attorney General Dana Nessel, who will be here. She will be in the Pocket Park on River Street. That's in the 300 block of River Street. And I'm sure she'd like to meet all of our elected officials and, of course, anybody here in attendance tonight. And we're really excited to have Attorney General Nessel joining us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Brian Carey, 113 Hancock Street. First council meeting, so. I'm the general manager of North Channel Brewing Company, just off of Washington Street, and presented the idea of bringing Oktoberfest to Manistee and it would be the first inaugural one. Think it would be great to bring the community together. We had hops and props. So I'm sure if all of you guys heard of it, no longer. Big gap in between summer and Sleigh Bell Parade. Perfect, right in the middle of fall. You got all the foliage. I'm from the East Coast, so New England, it's really nice up there too. But I think it would just be a great event to bring, one, the community together, other local businesses. I'm in works with the Great Lakes Environmental Society because it was one thing. I grew up in New York City, been to Times Square for New Year's Eve. I don't recommend it to literally anybody unless you want to be trapped for about eight hours. It's not fun. But what was the most important thing about that event is New York City needs to function the next morning and it's clean. It's like never, nothing even happened. And I worked with the Great Lakes Environmental Society. North Channel Brewing actually won Guardian of the Environment. So we won that award because we, we treat everything that what we do very seriously and we try to not go to waste, like we use paper bags, we use paper straws. So we try to do every little thing to save the community. And with us partnering with them, we want to be able to keep Manistee clean when we have an event to that magnitude. So it's going to be coming up. I thought it was today. Definitely wasn't today. But I will be continuing to come to these meetings because I think this is very helpful. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sammy Lucaskevitz from Manistee County Tourism. I just want to give everybody a heads up and a reminder that the Model T International Club will be making its way through Manistee from 11 till 4, July 17th. So coming up, we'll have about 250 Model Ts going through the city with about 550 people. So if businesses want to woo and attract them to their businesses, they're going to be looking for a place to eat. They'll be looking for things to do and shop. So they have all of our vacation guides. They'll be making their way from Cadillac. So they have their international club there and they'll be staying, which I would love it if they would stay in Manistee County. But they make daily excursions throughout their four or five days. And they've designated July 17th as Manistee Day. So they're going to take a few backroads. These cars do not go fast. They say they will not travel in packs, so they should not. They say they will not travel in packs, so they should not impact, but they are going to be coming down Maple Street and Washington. They won't be using our new beautiful bridge. But just be patient, but you might see about 250 Model Ts on July 17th, so, thank you.
Isn't that the car you drove to Cal?
It is. I bought it from Grabowski. My sons are driving it now.
Mr. Gamble.
Thank you, Mayor. So, the Army Corps started dredging this last week, and we have had an issue where it appears they actually went, so they started dredging further eastward, and that little area, number three, where it says Area 3 Not Maintained Due to Unstable Banks, it's near the red fishing shack, and it kind of, it looks like it's unstable at this point in terms of the, you can feel the deck bouncing a little bit. So, we're going to have to close that off and evaluate, but anyway, we're working with them to figure out what to do next. We're going to probably do some soundings, but I don't know, Chief or Sean, if you want to mention anything else, but.
I want to add just that we were alerted that today, we're still assessing, see what the impact is. We've made it as safe as we can for pedestrian traffic as this weekend weekend, there'll be a large volume of traffic. We don't control the timing, but we want to make sure, everything we do from the city side to make it safe for pedestrians. We also went house to house, notify some of the residents, just to make sure, you know, take an abundance caution, so.
Whose idea was it to do this on one of our busiest weeks of the summer?
So, the, the channel was shallow. It is a federal shipping. I mean, the Army Corps is in charge of making sure it's dredged. The decision to move the dredging further eastward, it was up to the Army Corps, but I would have.
But they had to do it this week, like it had to start this week?
Yeah, not our, not our preference, not our call, yeah.
Did they put spoils back in that area to stabilize that, or?
That, so once it's, once it's destabilized, putting in stone becomes problematic, I think, with Eagle, putting spoils back, that's a question I think we could ask them, but yeah. Very preliminary, we just found out, I just wanted you to be aware, it's closed, and just notify the public, it's going to be closed.
Now, does that affect it when the ships come through and they have their thrusters going, and is that going to bother them?
It hasn't, but I don't, yeah, I guess now that it's destabilized, probably it might.
So, it's closed on the river, so you can't go on the Riverwalk from that area to that area?
Right, we're trying to make sure, just because we don't know, you know, if it's how unstable it is, or if it will sink further and to what degree, so.
Unbelievable.
More to come.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anybody else? Mr. Bachman.
Just, I had a citizen, maybe other people got the same email, complaining about the Lakeside Social Pointed Property again today. I told them when you told me that building permits had been requested, and I think that product is moving forward, but I'd keep them advised. She also complained about the smell of marijuana coming from the grow operator up on the hill back of authentic. I have no idea what, what our enforcement or what our ability to do with that is, no clue. So, if there is an ability, I don't know what it is.
And just two things, marijuana, I think there are some restrictions on the smell, so we can take a look at that. And then, yeah, we do have the site plan, so we're going through site plan review on the Lakeside Social.
Did you send email?
I don't believe I did.
If not, you'll give it forward to you?
Please, thank you.
Just great job again. Had a broken record with Mr. Gamble, the city PD and DPW. We were continuing to have problems with some of the bathrooms, but after hours last night, I sent out an email, and within 15 minutes, I received several responses back. So, it's, it's that time of the year, and really appreciate the, the attentiveness to that. It's, it's great.
Thank you.
All right, so first I wanted to publicly say thanks to the Parks Commission, because they had this beautiful parks tour that we did. It's the first time I've done it, and it was just really, really well done. Is Jeff here? Jeff did a really great job talking about each park and knew the history of it from way, way back, and it's so valuable to hear that about our beautiful community and, and the parks that we have there. So, I just wanted to say thanks to everyone involved, and that was a really, really cool trip. Yay, the, the bridge is open, hot dogs. So, I went on it. My car didn't fall in the water, that's all good, so we're moving forward. Then, let's see, what else do I want to ask about? The breasts I can talk individually with, so that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Pratt.
I just wanted to piggyback on what Councilmember Lundberg said about the parks. And I would just add that during that tour, there were a lot of people in the parks, so that was really nice to see them being utilized. I think personally, I'm seeing them used more than ever before, and I think we've really raised the bar on the expectation in the parks, so that's really nice to see. I did have somebody reach out about the restrooms at the concession stand at First Street Beach. Their concern was that a couple of the stalls are missing doors. So, I'm not sure if that's been reported, or was a concern that was brought up, but just wanted to point that out. I'm constantly amazed by all the work done by the Chamber and the DDA, so thank you, everybody, for your hard work. It's very apparent at the DDA meetings that there's a group collaborative effort that doesn't go unnoticed. Sammy, the new brochures for Manistee County are amazing. I've heard many residents compliment them and comment on them, so I think they're at least being utilized and looked at, so thank you. And other than that, I just hope everybody has a great holiday weekend.
Thank you. Mr. Grabowski.
Okay, I was on the same tour as most of everybody here, and the dog pound looks great, a lot of people using it. So, it really is nice that the dogs can run up on all their platforms and have water in the park and all that. So, Cindy did get out of hand on the bus, but it's all right. I appreciate the DDA, we go to all the meetings. And Stacy, thank you for all your help in working down there with the Chamber and Mark and all them. So, but I do have a couple of things to bring up, Bill. One is at Catholic Central, that barn is getting higher and higher at the door, it's over six foot, almost seven foot, with paper right up by the door, and it's blowing up the hill. So, 12th Street is getting it, and I go pick up every week, I pick up the whole street, because it's a mess over there. Also, in the city dumpsters, I was over there the other day with the plastic and all that, and somebody's throwing a lot of paper in there. I wish we could get them stopped from that. It's really, I mean, bad for the guys when they haul it out here. Also, the storage barns cabinets up on top of 12th Street Hill, that's, the grass is getting higher than ever. They have stuff laying in there that hasn't been picked up in three years, broken chairs and all kinds of other stuff. I think, did you, Tracy, you say you got it taken care of? Okay, so she worked with them, and they're supposed to clean that up, so I hope that gets done. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Paniak.
I just have to piggyback on, I'm glad that everybody's working well together, DDA, the Chamber, the city, the Tourist Authority. I see a lot in the last couple of years, so happy about that. Happy the bridge is open, we're not getting as many complaints now. And then, I was just wondering if there's a update on the whole cardboard situation?
I did attend the county green team meeting. I was proposing that, I think, I sent a note to council about the issue over the MCC. It really is the recycling center for Filer Township, Manistee Township, probably Stronach. And so, my thought was probably a win-win would be for MCC, the Grand Eastman to the, and then have a PA 69 Act with those three different townships, and then perhaps set up a recycling center there. They probably have to fence it in as well and then restrict access, but, yeah, right now, I think it probably would have been challenging over the summer, even with the students not being there. So, this opened in the fall. It's just a challenging situation. We're still waiting for the quote for curbside. We wanted to move the co-mingle, just because I thought, you know, we were, there was a lot of dumping going on over there, and without there being a door, it's just a bad situation, but trying to work through it, but.
I've been getting a lot of complaints in my district about overgrown grass and weeds. I drive around, are we keeping track of doing letters or anything like that yet?
Yeah, if you're, yeah, if we report them to, you report them to DPW, they'll cut it, they'll give notice and then cut it. So, if you have addresses, we'll take them down.
Anybody else? Thank you. Motion to a chair?
I make a motion to a chair.